Yes. I'm gonna get started in just a minute, just for any folks that have joined us. Get started in just a minute here, we're just getting a few things set up. Alright, we're gonna get started in just one minute, we'll start.
It was great, this was a good day yesterday, it was nice outside yesterday.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We're waiting, we may have one more board member joining us, but we do have a forum of the board here, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:34. And just a quick revisiting of our meeting expectations now that we are hosting our dual format here. So the board does have a forum and is meeting here in person. The priority will be given to the in-person work of the board. And we will, if for some reason we have difficulties with our technology, we'll do everything we can during the meeting to address those. But so far, it looks like the technology is set and working for us, but if for some reason we do lose the connectivity of the remote part of the meeting, the board meeting will continue on because we do have on the board here in person. And as always, the minutes from the meeting will be made available once those are finalized. So just a quick revisiting of that, and then we will also, I'll go over the the guidelines for the public participation when we get to that part of our agenda. So thank you to folks that are joining us virtually and to folks that are here in the room with us. And we'll do a special recognition, we do have the select members here with us, but thank you all for joining us tonight too. So just to get started, we will approve the agenda, our first item. So do we have any changes or additions to the agenda tonight? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the agenda. Second, alright, so we have a motion from Denise and a second from Christine, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Alright, excellent, so our first agenda item is public participation. And Sydney, do we have some folks joining us, do we have folks that have?
We have some people who are attending online, so open up the chat.
Perfect, okay, so what we'll do is we have some folks here in person. And then we also have folks who have joined us online. And just as a reminder, if you're going to speak here in person, or if you're going to comment online, we do need you to provide your name and address with your comment so that it can be recognized and read. Your comments should come to the board chair. And any comments that come in virtually, as long as they have the name and address, will be read. Questions that come up, there, this, the board will take note of them. If we have a quick and direct answer to the question, we may provide it. But not all questions that come up during public participation may be answered in the moment. We will try to answer them later on in the agenda. Public participation really is our chance to hear from folks that are joining us tonight. So with that said, if we have anyone that would like to participate, please go ahead, you can speak in the room. Or if folks online would like to type into the chat, any public participation. This is when we wait quietly to see if anyone has anything there typing in. And we'll just give it a minute or so. I think I know why everyone who's here is here, so I think my, my in-the-room, the in-the-room people, I think I know why you're here, but we'll see if anyone that's joining us virtually has any comments at this point.
While we're waiting, can I ask them a question?
Sure.
Do you know why I hooked up a computer to the big TV out there?
Yes.
And the volume's not coming out of the computer, it's just coming up, and not coming out of the TV, just my computer. I know it's happened to staff before, but I don't know. No, the big TV.
Do you have to change it on, like, is it coming up on Zoom? Is it on Zoom?
It's on Zoom.
There's a setting in Zoom that you can change where the audio output is. Am I doing that? Yeah, yeah, I think you can do it in that little, the bar that's along the bottom.
Okay, I'm gonna do a quick check and then if not, no.
Alright.
Do you want me to go play with it?
Sure, you wanna come play?
Okay, so I don't see any public participation coming in. So we'll go ahead and move forward with the agenda. Our first agenda item is our student school board liaisons and
And we have one who was with us tonight, Ellen Woolston-Holm will be here. Seth can't make it tonight, he is in Nashville. They did win.
I was gonna say, what was he playing, soccer? Yeah, awesome.
And they just wouldn't make it back on time, so he couldn't join us tonight. So I will move Ellen in as a panelist. They're going to the championships. Hi Ellen.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
You.
Ellen, you're our one school board representative, student school board liaison tonight. So if you wanna just give us a quick report out of how things are going. If there's anything specific that you think the board should know, or that you'd like to draw attention to. And then we'll see if the board has any questions for you.
Yeah. And so things are going pretty well right now, it's kind of a transition period between sports, you know, sports are ending. Like Seth is soccer right now, and they're at their championships. And school field trips are starting to be like, open again. I just went on a Spanish field trip to see the murals at Dartmouth, it was great. And also the travel opportunities to Iceland or Rome, and Rome next year are being opened up again. And also, when I was entering into this meeting, I saw like, a short blurb under the meeting link, and it was talking about the Grantham School District's non-discrimination policy. And this reminded me that the Lebanon High School Library is starting to try and move away from the Dew decimal system because it has such a problematic past, with discrimination and representation. I was just wondering what, you know, GBS's library is doing with this, or what it stances about it.
I can tell you that we haven't approached anything with changing the Dew decimal system at this point, but we do have a new library media specialist this year, Mr. Fowler. So as we grow the library with him in charge, I will definitely bring this up to him. I think it's pretty fascinating.
Yeah, there's a lot of articles online, it's quite interesting.
And we are working, we do have a non-discrimination policy, but something that we started before the pandemic and need to finish is a non-discrimination action plan. And so I would love it if you would maybe be part of some of those meetings with us, I think that would be great to have your perspective.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up, that's something that I wasn't aware of. I think that's a great thing for us to be on, for us to have on our radar, so thank you for bringing that forward. Any questions or things from the board?
Hi Ellen, how are your classes going this fall?
Um, they're going pretty well, I would say that they're more intense than last year. For people who have taken the same classes I've taken last year, they'd say that last year was a lot easier than what we're doing this year, just because I think teachers are trying to, you know, catch people up, which is understandable.
One of the things that the board has on our agenda later in the meeting is we're going to be looking at, talking about Destination Imagination Legacy Teams. And I don't know if that's something that you were involved with at all, but even if you weren't involved in it, I'm wondering if you have a perspective that you would share with us on that, on your thoughts. The idea being legacy teams from folks who have left, graduated GBS and are at Lebanon middle or high school. There, there isn't the same opportunities offered in Lebanon for Destination Imagination. So the request has come to the board for the board to fund legacy teams for those upper grades. And as seen as they are Grantham students, part of our district, but within a different school system, we're just gonna be discussing and weighing some of those ideas. And so I was just wondering, as someone who's involved in extracurriculars and clubs at, you know, beyond GBS, if you have any perspective on our, that you could add to our conversation about that tonight.
Yeah, I used to do Destination Imagination, it was really fun. I don't think it's talked about a lot in the middle or high school, and I don't think the Lebanon kids get that opportunity in their elementary schools, not that I'm aware of. I think there would definitely be people who'd be interested in that. I would only say the only problem with Destination Imagination is it's such a big time commitment, and lots of people already have so much going on.
Any other questions from the board?
I thought there would be questions with lots of volunteers to chaperon those Rome trips.
Okay, alright, well, thank you, thank you for joining us tonight, we appreciate it, feel free to stick around if you'd like. We know you're busy, so we certainly don't expect you to stay and listen to all of the other very fascinating things we'll talk about tonight, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, so our next agenda item is something we started last month, so honoring our team as we head into our Blue Ribbon Year. Looking at some of, recognition for some of the folks that have made this possible for us. And so tonight, we're honoring our paraeducators, and we are thankful to have a couple with us here. So I will turn it over to Sydney.
I'm going to move Madeline Prudhoe Burke in as a panelist also, because she and Mrs. Reed have a quick thing that they would like to say to our paraeducators, whether they're zooming from home or whether they're here with us. Before they go, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the work that you do, and especially during this past year and a half, which has been particularly trying, and you're working with our kids who have had the most struggles, you know, not just every day, but especially through the pandemic, and your work is just so greatly appreciated. And I, we have some small gifts of appreciation for you. But this one I loved, that said, "Every student can learn, just never in the same way, all on the same day." Which I think pretty much sums up a lot of what the Paris story can be like. And thank you so much for being the sweet, kind, patient paraeducator who every single day is a Grantham child's hope and support. And I did find a small picture up here, I'll have to post that online because it's too small. Para-professional, a multitasking educational rock star who lives to inspire and loves to encourage. They're kind of a big deal. So thank you so very much, and I'll hand it over to Mrs. Reed.
So I ditto everything that Dr. Leggett says, that we so appreciate everything that the pares do in our building. And when I say everything, I mean everything. The pares wear many, many hats and are so flexible and change hats on a dime. So thank you for your flexibility and for your hard work, and we're so lucky to have you with Grandtham Village School.
And Mrs. Prudhoe Burke. Oh, you're still muted, Madeline. It's not a meeting unless we tell somebody they're muted still.
I agree with everything that was said, and I also want to say that I think that the really Grantham is blessed because the integrity and the professional responsibility that gets taken by the para-professionals in the building is really exemplary. And they do go above and beyond, and I do think they are the backbone, the daily backbone of special education plans for students. Where students get pretty unconditional support from these individuals who step up every single day, so it's, it's really a privilege to have such a dynamic team working at Grantham Village School, they're great.
So I will say, from, since this is looking back at, you know, the last year, and, and thanking you, I know one of my experiences with many of the paraeducators was this time last year, which I'm sure you've wiped away from your memory. Because for a lot of our paraeducators, they, in that like, other duties as assigned, part of their job description, they became the folks who had to her cats on class-wide Zoom meetings. And so I got to see the work of several of our paraeducators managing a virtual classroom of eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds, five-year-olds. And you would think managing kids on a screen might be a little easier, but it took a diff, whole different sort of skillset. And I know a lot of our pares stepped into that role of being those folks who were facilitating and managing those weekly, you know, group meetings of the classes, and so that's just an incredible thing that they were, that you all were able to take on and do, and offer our students so that they could have that connection back to their classmates, even if they were not seeing them in person for weeks or days or months at a time, or, you know, even just some of those longer breaks in between when they were seeing each other in person. It just kept those connections really alive. And I know that what you do every day in the classrooms in person here goes so far above and beyond that, but that was just such an interesting example to me of wow, we're asking them to do something that they probably never imagined they were going to do. So thank you all for what you're doing and what you have done in the last year for our students and for our community. And Sydney, did you say we have some of our pares who are joining us?
I think we have Mrs. Brown, who's on.
Excellent. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as always, like we said last month to our folks, we wanted to recognize you, but we don't want to hold you hostage. So if you would like to stay for some, or all, or any of the meeting, you are welcome to. But if you have things to do tonight to rest and recover for tomorrow, we also understand that. So don't feel like you're sneaking out behind us if you would like to head out tonight. Your, your role here was to be recognized, not to be made to sit and listen to all of us. Thank you. Okay, so our next agenda item is meeting with the Grantham Slack Board. So we're really grateful that you were willing to meet with us and to have a chance to touch base between our two boards and our work that we're each doing. I know one of the things that, one of the reasons, we've done this previously, but one of the other reasons that we wanted to meet was last year when we got into our, our budget, the depths of our budget season, and we realized that both of our boards were bringing forward large-scale projects. We decided it might be good to touch base before we're bringing those on to our warrants to see what the kinds of things are happening. We also would love a chance to just sort of bring up and look at the population growth that we're seeing in town, what that's gonna mean for us, potentially what it could mean for you. And then any other issues that, that you all have. And Sydney, I don't know if you have anything else for that.
I did a little presentation.
Perfect.
I don't know if you want me to do it now, or if you want to wait, it's up to you.
I'd go for it.
Okay, yeah. We just pull this up and then I'll be able to share my screen. I'll make sure that everybody gets the key points anyway. Okay, welcome, Grantham School Board, and now you'll be seeing this up here, and everybody who's online with us should be able to see this at this point. Thank you for being here tonight. There were a couple of topics that I know we wanted to bring up from the school district. One of those is just the, what Brittany was talking about with upcoming projects, so we are still moving forward with a GBS grounds renovation and playground project. It's gonna be important, as we all know from last year, to emphasize that the majority of this project has to do with site work, which with fixing the drainage out in our play space. So we have a, currently we have a bid out for a landscape architect and engineer for design, which would include the drainage mitigation, ADA compliance, all-season play for K through six. Making sure that we have that span of all of our ages and sizes. And we plan to have an estimate ready for our warrant article in February. One, one question that has come up is the tennis courts. Obviously, nothing that's gonna be decided tonight. But I can tell you that whenever we look at the playground, the question I get is, the tennis courts are always empty. Are you going to keep them? So that is something that we'll be discussing as we go through the design and engineering process. I've looked into the history of the tennis courts to, and I understand that they used to belong to the town, and then the school inherited them, I think around the time of the renovation, from what I can tell, or was it before then?
Conde has the most background, but were the tennis courts created with a federal grant? No. Okay, they were, they were raised by, oh, okay.
Okay, so I, again, it's nothing we'll decide tonight, but I, I know that that is always coming up in terms of do we keep those as we're really designing the playground, or do we, you know, talk about either relocating them possibly, or just not having them and opening up that kind of valuable real estate on our playground for our new design. Our fundraising efforts are going well, so the initial warrant article for $50,000 was, there was a commitment from the Playground Committee to match that in grants and donations, fundraising. We have already $25,000 with matching donations promised as we reach certain goals, in the amounts of $14,000 and $10,000 respectively. So we are just about at our 50,000 goal, we have a few fundraising drives right now that are going well, and I brought you information on them in case you would like to do any of them. But we have our brick, custom brick sales that we're going to have, and the brick engravings, our goal will be to sell 500, and those 500 bricks will become part of the new play area design, either as a a sitting area or a walkway or something like that. We have raffle tickets on sale with great prizes, and we also have a donation site. So thanks to the incredible generosity of Grantham residents, family and friends from a distance, some local grants that we've gotten from local charities, we're doing incredibly well, and I'm confident that we'll reach that goal or maybe exceed it. And do you wanna, do you have any questions about the grounds renovation and playgrounds space before I talk about enrollment? Okay. In terms of enrollment and growth, I'm sure that you've heard that we grew a lot last year in terms of our GBS enrollment. So we did have a population boom during COVID-19, a lot of people moved to Grantham essentially to escape cities where maybe their schools were closing, or they didn't feel that their kids had enough opportunities during COVID because of other shutdowns. And we, just this past year, we went from 247 students to 277 students. So that's a big period of growth for us. We're still seeing some transitions and moves, but enrollment is now stabilizing, which is a good thing for Mrs. Reed. Our largest classes right now, a grade level is 42, so that's two classrooms of 21, and I don't think we have any bigger than 21 at this point. Not yet, it could change tomorrow. And then so we, I have some vital birth records, people often talk about a baby boom during a pandemic, we're actually not really seeing that. So, you know, I'm always projecting five years of how many babies now will be GBS students in kindergarten in five years, and it doesn't look like there's going to be a huge jump from 2021 at this point, but we'll keep an eye on it. And we do have to keep an eye on move-ins, definitely. The one thing I really wanted to bring up tonight is I did some projections looking ahead at tuition because of our big classes that are here now. So when we're talking about the fact that we not only grew during the pandemic, but we also have very big classes from grades four down are much bigger than the last four or five years that we've had. So our projection for next year's budget is a total number of students that we would tuition to seven through 12 for secondary for about 3.4 million. I took the average tuition per student, and I put the average tuition increase over the last five years, which came to about 1.034. And if we project that out, assuming all of our current students stay and go all the way through LMS and LHS, just as a heads up, by 2029, we'll be looking at about almost $4.8 million in tuition. So it's, it is this immediate boom because of the pandemic, and these students seem to be staying. You know, as far as we have seen, nobody's moved back at this point. And it's not just that, it's that our K through four classes are large compared to the older grade levels that we have in the current middle and high school classes. So I just wanted, while you were here, to kind of have that bigger picture of enrollment and where we're headed. So I just wanted, while you were here, to kind of have that bigger picture of enrollment and where we're headed. Okay, thank you.
Um, any, um, other things from the board that you wanted to bring up to the selectmen? All right. From you all, any questions about any of that for us, or things that are on, um, your, what your work is, where your work is focused, or what you guys have going on right now, we'd love to hear, um, some of that.
Well, your initial concern was, uh, bonding, and, uh, we don't have anything on our agenda at the moment anyway. That was surprising, I guess, but, uh, nothing on just upcoming, uh, budget season or a bonding.
We're just, uh, getting our feet wet with the budget, we're probably not, uh, there as much as you guys are through yours at this point. Our project this year will be broadband to the areas of town that are not served or severely underserved. We all know where those are, South Grantham, uh, 114 and North Grantham. We have a committee that's working on that. It's not looking like we're gonna have to use any taxpayer dollars, but that we're still early in the process. But we'll use, we'll be using our upper monies for that, the $304,000 that we got. Capital projects. There's no trucks or cruisers coming forward on this warrant. Next year, or the next, this time next year, well, there'll be vehicle replacements, but hopefully capital reserves will supplement that. You guys have anything else to add?
Except I have a copy of what you were saying.
Oh, sure, this line just, yeah.
You can email it to, to us.
Okay.
That'd be great. I can't think of anything else. Do you have any questions for me?
I think this is just a good opportunity for the board and the select were to talk about the upcoming year.
Yeah.
I know last year when we met, there was some concern about, um, revenue from the state. Have you, has that, do you have any sense of what that's looking like in terms of state money and state revenue?
Well, uh, so, um, you'll be getting your tax bills soon. They, I think most of them were mailed today. The town, uh, the overall rate went down 54 cents. So state revenues came up higher, uh, meals and rooms came in 46,000-ish higher for us. So that's, um, almost 10 cents on our tax rate. So that was really good. It won't be there next year, so we'll have to make that up.
And there's a swept reduction, so.
What's that?
The swept reduction for the school tax.
The statewide.
Statewide educational property tax.
Yeah.
Just people notice that on their tax bills too.
So that's your tax rate, does that have?
That's part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was, so I was surprised when, you know, our highway block grant was the same, meals and rooms was higher than predicted. So that's always good.
Yeah.
When the revenues are higher than you anticipate.
Yeah.
We have the Town Hall bond, we've got a couple more years on that. And then the library bond, I think, is two years beyond that, so within the next five years, all of the bonds will be paid off on the town side. By 2020, by the 2020 FY '27, so. We're fiscal, so it's hard. Did I get that right? Yep, so, I mean, that's kind of where we're at, things could change in a heartbeat, um, you know that. But hopefully, I'm, I'm worried we're, stay good.
Yeah, I would say things are similar financially with the district right now, because we got about 92,000 more inadequacy than we expected. We returned, um, more to offset taxes this year, especially because of our utilization of a lot of the SOR grants. So financially speaking, we're in good shape as well.
And the school's, uh, tax rate went down 27 cents, was it?
I think so, yeah.
Or 30 cents?
Anything else, anyone right now? I know we've said thank you, but pass our, if you see them, pass our thanks on to the, um, fire and police for joining our parade, for helping us with the parade. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
It was great. And we actually put our, the next, um, couple of agenda items on here intentionally. If you all are interested in staying, the presentation that Sydney's going to give for the state voucher program, there is a potential tax impact for districts through that program, and it's, um, she'll, she'll let us know more, but it is very unpredictable in terms of what districts are going to see. And so she's going to talk a little bit about why that's the case and what we're trying to monitor for how that's going to impact our budgets, and then the next is our first budget presentation for our budget cycle. So, um, we really appreciate you all meeting with us, you know, again this year, and um, I think it's great to be able to touch base on some of those projects and, and keep that communication open. And if you, if you do need to have an early evening and you find yourself less interested in some of our later agenda items, we take no offense to an early exit. I just keep waiting for the meeting when someone says that to me. Has not happened.
Something.
Yeah, so thank you, we appreciate it, um, it's good to see all of you too. Okay, so our next agenda item is the New Hampshire State Voucher Program. Sydney's going to give us a, a presentation on that. Hopefully, it will give us some answers. My hunch is it will also create some questions.
So the biggest thing that will create questions is we're right now operating under temporary rules for the voucher system. And the permanent, permanent rules are, um, being discussed by the New Hampshire State Board of Education on November 10th. So it's coming up pretty quickly, so I will just hopefully get this ready.
I know it's hard to predict, but are we anticipating any big changes to the rules at the?
They don't seem to have a lot of changes from the draft.
Yeah.
So I read through the proposed rules today.
Will they be discussing the amount of funding they allocate to that program?
Yes, um, which I'll talk a little bit about here. The problem is they're not going to be able to predict anything either.
Yeah.
Sure, everybody at home can see this. Okay, so the, the voucher program is called the New Hampshire Education Freedom Account. So when you hear about EFAs, that's what everyone's talking about, is the Education Freedom Account Program. A little slow tonight. Okay, so, um, this was, I, I'm not sure if you followed how the Education Freedom Accounts came into existence, but they were their own, uh, bill at first, which failed and kind of got shot down. And then it was rolled into HB2, into the main budget. So it was one of those situations where if the entire budget's passing, the, the EFA program became part of that. They have adopted emergency or temporary rules in order to get the program started. So the program is currently in effect for this school year. And the final rules are for November 10th, and everything that you'll hear about tonight is applicable right now. So here are the current parameters, is that 10% of each voucher goes to the New Hampshire Children's Scholarship Fund, and they're the scholarship fund who has been, um, chosen by the state to administer all of the vouchers. So for example, for every, um, it's about, I think, a little over $1,800 this year, plus any just, um, any differentiated aid. 10% of all of those costs go to the New Hampshire Scholarship Fund for facilitating this program. And then the New Hampshire Scholarship Fund contracted with Class Wallet to do all of the financial transactions with the individuals and families who apply for the vouchers. So I think that one thing everybody needs to understand is that this isn't a direct check to families. It goes through a scholarship agency, and then it goes through this class wallet, and that 10% of all funds do go to these agencies for facilitating and administering the program. Anyone is, um, at, is eligible for an EFA if they are earning up to 300% of the poverty line, which is going to be $78,600 for a family of four. According to national statistics, the New Hampshire Voucher Program is now the largest voucher program in the entire United States in terms of students who are eligible. Um, to mitigate the initial impact, this is with the temporary rules, districts lose only 50% of eligible aid in the first year, so that's why it's a little over 1,800, but moving forward, it will be the full adequacy amount, which is close to $4,000. Vouchers can be used for students in homeschool programs, private schools, religious schools, and public schools that accept tuition students. And funds can be used for the following, although this isn't a complete list. Tuition and fees, tutoring services, textbooks, instructional supplies, computer devices, internet, uniforms, test fees, summer programs, therapies, and college tuition if the student is still in high school. So some of, those are some of the main uses. And I have, um, concerns. I just wanted to list some of the concerns that I see as a public school administrator and educator in New Hampshire. The funds come from the New Hampshire Education Trust, so this is the same pool of money that all of our adequacy funds come from. So, um, there was a much higher draw than advocates presented. So when this was presented to the state board initially, uh, they estimated that there would be about $130,000 access this year, and it's now 7 million for requests. So about $7 million will be coming out of the New Hampshire Education Trust. Um, there's only a one-time financial disclosure, which means that you can present your finances to show that you're eligible financially. And after that, you don't have to do it every year, it's just a, but yeah. Special education students get an additional $2,000, which is the differentiated aid. And this is a concern as an educator, because you are eligible for that if you're an EFA student. If you have any medical provider in the United States, sign off that you are, have a disability. So you don't have to go through the IEP process, you don't have to have an evaluation, a team, the way that we look at evaluating services. I kind of wish I had a camera for the looks on everybody's faces right now. And in addition, with that $2,000, if you're eligible that for special education, there's no accountability, there's no requirement that you spend that on special education services. So you can still spend it on whatever you want. There are concerns about dual enrollment violations. So for example, we have quite a few, not quite a few, but for Grantham, a few homeschool students who still partake in sports and co-curriculars in some classes at the high school, which is great, it works really well. But those students are now eligible for the EFA, and they can still access all of those things. There is a lack of, the, lack of accountability right now, because I can tell you that there's no district in New Hampshire right now that is aware of exactly who is accessing a voucher. We just don't know, they don't have to tell us. So the state has said that at some point, there will be a report that comes out once the scholarship agency is up and running, and we'll be able to look by the student's identification number to see how many vouchers are being accessed from Grantham resident students, but at this point, we have absolutely no idea. Um, there are some concerns legally about the separation of church and state in terms of the fact that this is eligible to go to religious schools. And, um, what's being sort of parsed out in courts right now is the difference between, is it okay to provide funds, public tax pay our funds to a religious affiliated school? Or is it going to be just not for religious instruction of a particular religion? So right now, the answer is yes, you can send these tax dollars to religious schools. Um, another concern is that New Hampshire Scholarship Fund and Class Wallet have refused right-to-know requests to access any financial information regarding the vouchers, because they state that their private and right-to-know laws don't apply to them. So I have a concern in terms of transparency of public tax dollars that, you know, that we would need to be able to access any right-to-know requests through them. They do have an audit that the state will complete, so it's not that it's nothing. There's an audit process, but I think it is a concern for your, you know, every taxpayer has a right to this information. So I think that will become more and more of a concern. And since we're under temporary rules and we don't know what the final rules will be, right now, there's a possibility of grandfathering in everybody who's accessed the temporary rules, under the temporary rules, which is that original $7 million that's already going. So those are my concerns.
Yes.
I was just curious if, what, on the right-to-know access?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be similar to what NHMA went through with the right-to-know about, um, you know, schools and towns paying them, they, they were not disclosing the salaries of their staff?
Are they private, though? I thought they were public.
No, they got sued, um, and they have, they have to disclose. So I wondered if it's the same thing, so.
Well, there is an audit requirement, but it's very, it's different than a real right-to-know eligibility.
Yeah.
So, yeah, maybe they will be sued for that as well.
It's just wanted to clarify, so a, a large number of families have already applied for this.
Yes.
Did everybody who qualified get funded, or did they somehow select? Because I understood there was a very small amount of money that was allocated for this.
About 100.
Yeah, 140,000 or something.
So, um, they haven't, uh, they're gonna, they're doing quarterly payouts, so I don't know if they've already done the first quarter payout, but, I believe the way that they set it up is the first payout is 20% of the allocation. For example, on like September 1st, another 20%, another 30%, another 30%, so you don't get the big chunk of money all at once, it goes out throughout the year. So if we're talking about, if all 7 million have been approved, because they have to be approved by the scholarship organization, that the money that would have gone out at this point would be 20% of that 7 million.
Okay, but where does 7 million come from? That's what's in this.
It came from the Education Trust, it came from the same pool of money.
Does that mean that this program is taking away from adequacy money?
Yeah, 100%.
So if there isn't enough adequacy, every tax goes up again.
Absolutely. So there's, there's a, there's a lot of pieces moving in and out. So for example, the reduction in swept also has to do with that Education Trust, right? So say there's, there's almost an average of about a billion dollars in the New Hampshire Education Trust. And then swept would normally be $363 million raised of that. For this year, and this year only, as far as we know, they cut that back to 263 million. So that's 100 million, that's also out of the adequacy. There's this 7 million, and then. There's this seven million and then, you know, and then the rest goes to adequacy. So right now, I guess we're hopeful about our finances in the town and the school. The state is feeling hopeful that they will be able to get the tax revenue and business tax revenue and lottery and everything to get the education trust back up where it's supposed to be. I think one of the things that, well, I believe personally that our adequacy needs to be higher, you know, it's we can't educate students on, you know, thirty eight hundred dollars each. But the other problem is that whenever there's been a surplus in the education trust, it's almost run like a nonprofit where the surplus goes back into something for schools. So remember, we got an infrastructure grant and we did the safety audit and we did the window film and everything. All of that came from the infrastructure grant that came from the surplus in the education trust. So you know, those kind of opportunities will will disappear.
Is there a rule that says adequacy has priority over?
Not that I know of. Not that I've seen.
I mean, that's an equity issue.
Well, that's and that's part of the cornerstone of the law, the lawsuit. Right in the midst of the lawsuit brought against the governor and the commissioner about this issue. This is what's happening.
And what about the children who whose families may request the vouchers? Maybe they sent them to school, maybe they didn't. We don't have oversight of this.
They don't have to send them to a school.
And it doesn't work out and the child is back in public school. So we have no money there either. There's no accountability.
Well, I'm just trying to think, there would be some protection since it's not one big check, you know? So if they come back and if they come back to school, you know, they wouldn't get whatever that next payout is.
Do they report it to the scholarship fund though if they put their child back in?
They're supposed to. There are concerns with other states, you know, particularly Arizona has a big voucher program. There are concerns with fraud. So I think that is, and I'm sure a lot of people will use it very equitably and very professionally and very respectfully. But there is a history of fraud that goes along with these programs.
Oh, this thing about the special ed students. Where they don't get the usual kind of evaluation.
Yeah. And it's anywhere in, anywhere in the United States, any, any medical provider.
So this is coming
Let's hear
To the board, I mean, it's coming to the state board on the tech.
Correct. Yes.
So all of this will affect your budget that you'll present in March.
It doesn't, it, so if we have a student, we still have adequacy for that student. So it doesn't take away what could happen. And let's hope this doesn't happen in Grantham. But say it starts to pull away a lot of students from school. We start to lose big chunks of adequacy. And then when we lose those bigger chunks, that means we need to cut positions. It means we need to cut programs. It means that we can't fund the things that we would normally fund because we always work on, you know, the bigger economy scale in terms of, you know, we maximize a resource so that we can have, for example, one person who can provide something for all K through six. You know, if things start to get chipped away, we might have to say we can't afford to have that person or we can't afford to have that position. And because we're losing students and then we lose the adequacy.
And I think this is something that we'll see the, the impact from year to year of it. There's a, the, the way the funds come in, the way they go out and the way they impact the districts is a very nonlinear equation. And so some of those impacts for us could be later on down the road in terms of things like building projects or infrastructure things that previously there may have been that surplus that districts could safely assume, you know, there'd be state money for. We may be looking at less and less opportunities for state funding, which then shifts those costs locally. So, you know, our, our building still needs, you know, upkeep and our, our vehicles still need maintenance and those things. And previously there were often opportunities to get funding for those from the state. This may remove some of those funding opportunities. So in terms of our like long-term planning, it just puts more instability for us in terms of what our funding sources are for those things.
I see some really significant legal battles coming, especially with, say you are a student, an EFA student, and you have been granted the differentiated aid for special education. And then you choose, your parents place you in another public school. Because you can go to another public school if they accept tuition students. I think there's going to be a lot of questions because technically if you're parentally placed, you are kind of waiving your right to the free and appropriate public education and special education. But if you're in another public school, does that mean that they don't, you know, do anything? And who's responsible? Is it the public school where you've been parentally placed? Or is it you're sending districts? Because most of the time it's your sending district. I think that's going to be particularly confusing.
Sydney, could you maybe address what you know of the lack of public input with the Department of Ed in addressing this whole?
I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but I think they had something like eight hundred people speak. It was a huge number of people spoke and the majority of people spoke in opposition.
During the hearing?
During the hearings.
And that was for the original.
That was for the temporary rules. Yeah.
For the temporary rules or for the original bill?
Original bill.
And that's the one that got voted down. And then when it was put into the budget bill, there was no public input during that process.
So fun. You have to map on that. Thirty eight hundred dollars roughly a student. Two hundred and seventy seven students, definitely a million dollars. Roughly ten percent of our overall budget that is potentially being impacted. And that, and that accurate way of looking at it.
So you're gonna do, you're doing that a lot faster than I am. So you're saying, say we lose ten percent of students?
No, what I'm saying is overall, we get thirty eight hundred per student. We have two hundred and seventy seven students, so we're getting roughly a million dollars, a little over a million dollars a year from
From adequacy.
From adequacy. Really, that's, that's the number that's at risk.
It is. Yeah. So say we have, say we have ten students who decide to access an EFA and say five of them get four thousand and five of them, you know, get eight thousand. And then so, you know, we'd be looking at taking that bigger chunk of money. And for us, when we're doing our budgeting, that's going to be incredibly close in terms of looking at that sixty thousand dollars, that's going to be more than a parent, it'd be two parents, it could be a teacher, you know, that's, and that's just for ten students.
I guess I just have the hardest time with the lack of transparency because I think about what we do as boards in the town and the public needs to know where their dollars are going. And that's our job to be accountable and have this information available. And yet I don't understand how this process can not be a transparent process with public money.
And I think that of the perspective from the people who are advocates of this program is that it's completely transparent. And that it's the, the parents' right to choose their child's education and their curriculum.
All right. Well, we will check back in and revisit if there's major changes that come after the after the state board meeting.
So November tenth is a very big state board meeting because they're discussing this. They're discussing the ability for local districts to move to remote instruction if they need to for health and safety. And they're also doing the Holocaust and genocide legislation, like implementation of that legislation with those rules that day too. So it's a, it's a very big state board day.
Hey, thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is the budget presentation for special education and related services. Do, do we get to see? This is Crudo Burke again.
Thank you so much for coming.
Do you guys want to separate out a little, get some space?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
It's me.
And so if you want to go to the special education function twelve hundred in your budget book, so I'm going to have Madeline and I'm actually going to bring Karen Lissard in as a panelist as well. So they'll both be up here to walk you through all of these different lines.
Hi Karen.
Hello.
Are we going to see you or are you in your PJs?
I'm not in my PJs, but I can't quite figure out how to have you see me, so maybe not. Oh, wait a minute. I found it.
Don't seem so disappointed.
That's the opposite of PJs.
It's a beautiful color. So the special education budget has some changes in it that you may recognize as significant. We'll start at the beginning. The first line is just special education instruction, which is your professional educators. And you can see that there's very little change there. It's the next line that I think we really need to pay attention to. You'll see that the approved budget was sixty-five, one eighteen. And we're asking now for eighty-seven thousand and you all know, I think that I am leaving my position this year. And you have to hire somebody. And so we've had lengthy conversations about the ways in which the position might happen, could happen. And we've collectively as an administrative team talked about the advantages and disadvantages of a full-time special ed administrator, somebody who would continue to also do, be the LEA for all of the meetings at the middle school and the high school, and that would include at the middle school and the high school, all five oh four planning. So in the budget, you have a, the figure of eighty-seven thousand dollars is a figure for a full-time special education administrator.
Madeline, I'm going to interrupt just for a minute because I'm going to pull up a quick comparison of some other
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Well, also he's doing that out of curiosity on the wages on the special instructional. We're seeing a decrease here in the wages?
It was a new hire. So with a new hire, somebody is going to be on a different step in track than the person prior to them.
Yes, they came in at a lesser amount of, with a lesser amount of experience.
Let me zoom this.
Oh, there we go.
A little better, right? Zoom and share. So as we've been talking about this, I tried to find, it's not always easy for us to find comparative districts. But basically what you'll look, what you'll see here is the district, the SAU number, their student population, total student population, and the full-time equivalent of their special education director, special services director. So we started at a low end and I tried to choose districts that were like Grantham in the sense that they're their own district and then they send to middle and high school. Or that there are a district in itself that's about our size or close to our size. So Monroe is one twenty-seven with a point seven FTE. We move up to Lyme with two hundred and ninety student population and they're a point eight. Centipede has four hundred and one students, they're full-time FTE. Moltenbrough is close to that. Plainfield and Cornish combine one person with four hundred and thirty-seven students for a point eight. Grantham, we're at four hundred and sixty-one students and we're at a point five. Gilmanton, Pittsfield, Alton and Barnstead would be the next ones closest to us in population that are their own districts that send to a different secondary school and they are all a full-time FTE. So you can kind of see how we are a misfit.
Yeah.
I don't bring this request to you lightly because, you know, we know that increasing the position isn't always the easiest thing to do. We've also for the last two years tracked Ms. Crudo Burke's actual hours each week. And the thing with this type of position is that it's not really part-time because she is still a pre-K through twelve and through transition special education director for all of our students and including five oh fours. She is still our LEA for everybody seven through twelve and beyond. So we toyed with the idea of keeping this as a point five and then hiring a, basically a five oh four coordinator for seven through twelve, because that would be another viable option. I'm going to recommend that that's not the better option because I don't think you would save a lot of money, even including the additional benefits. Because you would lose, well, you'd have to pay the two part-time salaries, which would probably be about equivalent. But you would lose that one person who has the oversight of all of the district resources. This person has to allocate personnel to all the communication and allocate resources. And I think having one person with that oversight is a better way to go for the kids, for families at one point of contact and better coordination with Lebanon too. Right. So I am going to stop sharing and hand it back to Madeline and Karen and see if the board has questions before we go to any other lines.
I will just say my, as I was looking through the board packet and as I was thinking about this, my pitch for supporting this proposal from, from you all is, I think, special education is a high liability point for a district. And I think a strong special education director who has the time that they're being compensated for to do that work is, has the potential to save a district more money than it costs them. That one person is, I know, I, I think we all know that in the time that we've had, Madeline, she has done work that has probably resulted in significant budget savings for us just by virtue of what she's able to do. And so to me, this is one of those areas where investing a little bit more in a person who's able to do that work saves us risk and liability. And that's a really a point where the district could be a significant financial risk for special education needs.
Anybody else?
We can always come back to it. So we can go on to the van driver.
Yeah, the van driver. We haven't used that money, but we've decided to keep it in there in the case that we do need a substitute. That's what that was for, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and that would be if we had to hire somebody ourselves. And this year we've been able to use first student drivers. And the special education summer tutoring, you know, we had some conversation, Kristin and Sydney and I about how just well-oiled and well-put-together the summer program was this year and how we integrated special education services into that program and how really highly effective we all thought it was. So we put the exact same amount of money in there anticipating that would be glorious if the program could work in the same way. And if it doesn't, you know, we have extended school year services that would, would happen for a specific number of children that either had regression of skill, had difficulty recruiting, recruiting skill after an extended period of time out of school, who had an emergent skill or had a low incident disability where they would lose skill totally without some level of intervention that was related to their current IEP. So I think that's a fair number to keep back in there. And paraprofessionals speaks for itself. We didn't reduce. We didn't reduce this, the We didn't reduce the bathing expectation for next year. So what we have now is what we're requesting. Paraprofessionals do a lot to support the infrastructure of the school. And Kristin and I have talked on more than one occasion about the idea that less would not be helpful. But of course, we defer to you.
I just have a question about that line. Now, as I remember, the paraprofessionals are included in the CBA. So did you anticipate an increase? We, in the negotiate, coming out of the negotiations?
No, I don't care. You haven't done anything with salary increases, right, because of the negotiations?
Right, those are the actual people that are in the building and the actual wages that they're earning this year.
Okay. So what account for the 47 to 15% increase year over year for that?
So before the end of last year, we had to hire two additional paraprofessioners because of specific student IEPs. So they aren't new this year or new proposed for next year, they just didn't show up in last year's budget.
And that, that could also change if we receive another student who has a need for more.
Yep.
At any time.
Yeah, and we never know. We, we, you know, we don't know who's coming or who's going until, really, it's kind of late in the year usually. And then preschool wage is actually the preschool instructor. And she's doing a great job. And then the rest of the buyout, the insurance, the deductible, I know, I, I'm going to guess that you don't have any specific questions about those, all the way down to.
Contracted services.
Contracted services. But if you do, I'm sure between Karen and myself, Sydney, we could answer them.
Answer, you might have one question about the 1753 increase. I'm guessing that that might be a question for the special education. Oh, yeah. Because I know that you, we, there aren't any increases due to negotiations, but we have a track change, so somebody will be earning a new degree. Okay, so that's why that, there's that.
Special school.
Yeah.
I had a question. The line item that says special ed teacher NHRS, and I'm embarrassed to say I don't.
That's the retirement system.
Retirement system.
I guess that, but there's a line, retirement above it.
One is for support staff and one is for professional staff.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The second line is professional staff.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And the reason for the increase is the full-time special ed director. Right now, Madeline is not in New Hampshire retirement because she's only half-time. But if you move towards the full-time, then that person will be in New Hampshire retirement.
You should have told me that a couple of years ago, Karen.
You want to say?
No. I'm going to. Keep trying.
Have we got the sure quote yet?
We did. So we, our GMR is a 4.2 for next year, which in my discussions with other districts, we should be dancing. Some local districts are looking at 17 or 18% GMR.
Oh, my gosh.
And our dental actually decreased by 1.5%.
Those at some place else.
Yes, those, those numbers will be, we lumped them all together because in some function codes, if we didn't do that, it would kind of identify what type of a plan a person had. So we lumped that all together into one number at the very beginning of the budget. So you'll see those at a later time.
The next one is special education contracted service. And you see that there's a huge, actual spending was 56,671, 71 cents, and the requested budget is 8,000. And there is a legitimate explanation for that. We had unanticipated, we had not anticipated a family moving in. One of the children, most of this, one of the children had significant needs. And although another school agreed to the child staying in the school that they came from and we did not have to pay tuition, we did have to pay all of the contracted services associated with that. And I think, Karen, that came to like 26, 27,000. It was quite a bit of money.
It was 42,000.
Oh, 42,000, even more. And that would have been for the BCBA and OTPT speech, time with the special ed teacher. So we didn't pay tuition. We did pay all of the related services or direct instruction by a specialist. So you can see the difference there, 8,000. We would anticipate lots of money was specifically identified under a different function and object code. And this 8,000 would be applied to like, maybe a special education evaluation that, that was outside of the wheelhouse of Deer Creek or something specific that we were not anticipating. It's not a large amount of money, just something in there for a cushion.
Was this student still attending the other school? They're not in our district anymore? Oh, okay.
Yes, they're not. Anything else there? There's no money in preschool-related services because we put all of the services, whether it was PTOT or speech, it's all in the function and object code related to the specialty area. So nothing is specific to preschool.
We're gonna, and we're gonna skip back up one line to van operating expenses though.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. And we're, we had originally put in 4,859 and we're gonna lower that if you want to make a little note in your books, but we'll be changing these pages as you make your changes. And Karen, we are gonna go for it, is it 2,500?
Correct.
So it's actually a decrease. And when we're looking at van operating expenses, we'd be looking at inspections, repairs, do we need new tires, you know, those kind of things would go into that amount.
And we think we're gonna drop from 2021 to 2022, 2023?
We do because we checked on, we bought new snow tires and we checked on other tires and we think we're pretty good, right?
We had to replace tires and brakes in 2021. That's why it was so high. So we're hoping we don't have to do that again.
One would hope.
Too soon.
Yeah. The next one is special education transition services. And I'm going to ask you to look at that $100,000 and then go down to special, secondary, special ed secondary tuition. And these numbers are somewhat related. We are expending or anticipating spending around $100,000 for a very special program that is related to transition services for an adult student who is not yet 22. And that's why it's transition, because that would be the focus of the work being done. And we would not be using, three of them down, the special education secondary tuition, which would be a decrease in $124,000. Isn't that right, Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
Between that one and the next line down to those two.
Yeah, it was also the 106. Yeah. So that, that's right. So secondary tuition, private and private residential were together. So the total cost there was a significant amount of money. And that would be a reduction of the 124 and the 149. And instead, the expenditure would be the $100,000. I don't anticipate any secondary tuition out of the district. We did, we did talk about, oh, I guess elementary tuition doesn't have anything in it. Oh, the van lease, we should probably talk of the van lease.
That's just basically the increase for the third year of our three-year contract with our student for the driver.
And then no elementary tuition anticipated. So there's no money there. No private or public. And then secondary, no private, no residential. So there is a, an amount in there, which is a cushion amount of 51,000. We sometimes do not know if we're going to have state place or court placed children in the school where we have a financial liability, where they're placed somewhere. And we have come across that in a couple of, two or three years ago when I was here. And so there were some pretty significant unexpected costs, so we've put that 51,000 in there. Sydney, do you want to say anything else about that?
No, I just, I, I would always recommend having at least one court placement in the budget because we did get, we did have two several years ago and caught without it. So I think it's a good thing to have in there. That's the, so the state sets the rate.
We ready to move on? Special education travel, that's really travel reimbursement for me, but it's, I mean, I guess you could reimburse me from going from the chair to the porch or from one chair to the other, but I don't think you want to do that. Okay, I know that wasn't nice, but you will, you will, with the, with a new individual who is physically present, who is moving from school to school, there will be the need for travel money. So that went back in there. And the money wasn't, I think, 53 was used the year before. And then special ed supplies, we're keeping that at 2,000. Gasoline, that's gasoline for the van, right?
Yes.
Yes. No software needs, special education equipment. And that, that does come up from time to time. It's not a lot of money. I think it's important to keep it in there. We, we do use grant money if we have it available. And special education dues and fees, that's for participation in the, in the special education administrators group at the local, the regional level, which is West Central and/or the state level. Any question about any of that?
That completes the 1200 function before we go on to the related services. So I don't know if you want to discuss that function before we move forward.
I just want to ask for clarification. So you were saying we ought to have court.
One, the cost of one court placement.
Correct. And so if it's not in here now, how does that?
It's the, it's in your, that secondary tuition.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Karen, I didn't number my pages. Is the next page, speech?
No, psych services, 21.
Okay.
Any other questions for that first batch? Thank you. We'll do.
Okay, the next section, yep, psychological services. Currently, we contract with Deer Creek Associates. And you can see that we pretty much stay in the ballpark. And so I'm budgeting the same amount of money that we had for last year. Seems to work out in a pretty balanced way. And for the most part, just so that you know, that's most, almost exclusively just the elementary school, psychological services. Because per the area agreement, although there, there, in my four years, there was one exception where we used Deer Creek. And it's complicated why, but I thought it was legitimate. The middle school and the high school have their own school psychologist and the services there, psychological services are handled at the building level.
Any question about that? In that picture? Can we have everything and all that on this stuff?
No.
We're on target. I'm sorry, I was just going to say, we also have the, we also, with our IDEA grant, we tend to write in some money for contracted services as, as a cushion in case we do go over that.
Yeah, and just so that you know, the, the reason that we need a school psychologist is because children who are on IEPs every three years are, we're required to do an evaluation. And then in addition to that, if we have somebody coming in from another state, we're obligated to determine eligibility in New Hampshire. And then in addition to that, we do take some referrals either from parents or internally from teachers or staff. And then the decision, the decision gets made about will we move to evaluation. So it is not a huge number of children that get evaluated. I think it's been pretty stable over the last couple of years. And we can pretty much predict how many children that's going to be. All right, Karen, are we on to speech, OTPT?
Yep, speech.
Okay. I keep losing myself here. All right. You'll see, like last year, there were no speech wages, health insurance, insurance, dental life, none of that, because we contract with Boothby. We are expecting to have a contract with Boothby again for the upcoming year. It has been a cost savings to some degree. I think that we're getting really exceptional service from Cheyenne Smith, who is the speech language pathologist that we contract with, with Boothby. And she's been an outstanding member of the community. So it's pre-K to sixth. She screams, does intervention, direct instruction, evaluates, and has full participation in meetings where children have speech service on their IEP. So you're getting about 37.5 hours a week of her service in this contract. Any questions?
I know one of the reasons we went to that, and it seems like, like it's working, but I know one of the reasons we went to that is because there's just a workforce shortage in that area. Is that still true?
Still very true. It's incredibly difficult to find a speech language pathologist.
So trying to bring that position back in house right now would not make sense.
No.
Since it's working and there's no one to hire.
Right.
Got it.
We're very happy with this arrangement.
Yep.
Yeah. I don't think you can really tell that she's.
I've already done that. It's the field to, one of the great fields to go into, I'd say.
Yeah.
OTPT, right Karen?
Yes.
Okay. So you all know that we have an occupational therapy assistant that's an employee of the district. In addition to that, we have, we use Boothby for the occupational therapist who provides direct super clinical supervision for the Coda, which we are obligated to provide. The OT also provides direct instruction to a child. And that is one-to-one service. And then she evaluates, does consultation with teachers, parents, and the evaluation planning team, reports out, and works in the summer. So what you have, I'm just talking occupational therapy now, and if I have it right, Karen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch for a second and say, out of the 41,9, 16,130 of those dollars are just physical therapy.
It's not the 41,9, it's the 40,000 down at the contracted service. The 41,9 is our Coda's salary.
Sorry, I should have started at the top. I'm gonna go back to the top. I'm gonna go back to the top. So it shouldn't say OTPT Coda wages, it should just say Coda, right?
Yep, we can fix that.
Yeah.
I think that's the title of the whole function.
Yeah. So that's, that's our Coda. And then she's got the health buyout. And then the rest are the usual social security, Medicare, retirement, unemployment compensation, workman's comp. And then we're down to the 40,000, right? Which is OT and PT contracted services. So all So of the forty thousand dollars, Karen, if I don't get this right, I know you'll correct me. Of the forty thousand dollars, sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty of those dollars are for physical therapy contracted service.
Yes.
Which leaves the rest of the money as occupational therapy. That contract is a contracted service that we have with Boothby, also with Boothby. And of that, there, there really are some components to what the occupational therapist does. The occupational therapist provides about ten percent of the rest of the money is for clinical supervision for the Coda, which is required. Um, direct instruction to a student, both during the school year and in the summer. Because Mary provides direct instruction to everybody else. And then there's the individual who we contract with does evaluations, consultation to teachers, parents, the evaluation and planning team, and works in the summer. Because our Coda does not work in the summer. So then the instruction that happens just in the summer is direct for that person. Any questions about that? May I do audio, audiology or vision?
Audiology first and vision.
Okay. So audiology is, um, it's a couple of things. They're all contracted services. Uh, one of the services that we are contracting for next year is for an audiologist to maintain the, um, um, I have to be careful what I say because I don't want to identify the children, right? So, uh, it is for both the mechanical, uh, making sure that the instruments that are being used for a child who might be hearing impaired, that they're working properly, that there's been an assessment of the material, that the, that the, um, devices are properly calibrated. And that anybody working with a child with any kind of hearing devices knows and understands how to put the devices on, how to maintain them, make, see if the batteries are dead. And then also understands the implications for a child with a hearing impairment in a learning environment. So part of that twenty five thousand dollars is that. And then the other part of that is for a teacher of the deaf. Part contracted. Any questions about that? And the last one is vision, contracted services for vision. Um, what, uh, the contracted service for vision is divided into two pieces. One is orientation and mobility for a child who is visually impaired and orientational ability. I, I'm sure you know this. I'll just say that it is um, making sure that the learning environment and the playground is accessible to the child to the greatest extent possible in the safest way, given the visual impairment of the child. And the other part of the contract is for a teacher of the visually impaired, and we contract with two separate. Uh, one is an individual and the other one is an agency. Teacher of the visually impaired, that's about print, that's about um, making sure that the learning environment, the lights are right, that the, that the child has access and is stimulated by, uh, books. Augmented communication devices, anything that would promote learning for a child has a visual impairment. Any questions about that? That was easy peasy.
Madeline, I just want to tell you how appreciative I am of your knowledge of the budget and how well you explain it. So it's not always done that way. Thank you.
We're very clear. Thank you.
Oh, good. You're welcome. Well, that's because Karen coached me.
All roads lead to Karen.
That's right. You get to give credit where credit is due.
We're also wondering how far flattery will get us.
Absolutely nowhere. No, I do want to say something, though I know now isn't necessarily the appropriate time. I just want to say that it has been an absolute and continues to be an absolute gift and a privilege to work, uh, in the district with Sydney, with Karen, with Brenda, with, um, you know, what's her name, Kristen. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. And, and, uh, with a, with this incredible board, it's, it's really been an honor for me, and I do enjoy the work. And, and now I, you know, now you need to get somebody really vital in there who's going to shake the place up and. So it's my tactic.
You're a personal.
But you deserve a next chapter just for you.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Feelings mutual.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both for your work on this and for the presentation. We really appreciate it. Um, any questions or conversation the board wants to have about this budget area before we?
Well, I just wanted to say I, I support the recommendation for a full time.
I just trust your judgment that that's the better way to go.
Let's, I'm sure you already have it on there, but let's fill that on our short list of things to come back to when we get to the end of the budget process. All right. Thank you both very, very much. We'll, we'll let you come down off the big screen.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so our next agenda item, uh, is the, um, destination imagination request. And so we actually have that memo in our board packet. I finally get to say some things in our board packet. Um, and so we have a memo here from Sydney, um, looking at the legacy teams. And I actually had a question as we get started on this, Sydney. Have we had, like, have we funded legacy teams in the past?
So we funded when they went to competition.
Okay.
Um, but we didn't fund the, like, when they made it to globals and they weren't sure if they could go, we did fund that. We have not, you know, upfront funded a coach and their fees and everything.
Okay.
So this would be new for this, for this time around. I did just, um, text Mrs. Beck to see if she might be able to join us. Um, so if she gets back to me, I'll call her in as well.
Absolutely.
Um, and she, let me see if she's actually here. Nope, she's not on yet.
So have, have students, um, at the middle and/or high school expressed interest in continuing?
The Grantham students have. Yeah, yeah. So, um, I, I have to tell you that. I put the pros and cons down because I do feel a little torn about this, you know?
Yeah.
Yep. Because on the one hand, I think everybody's gut reaction is, of course, destination imagination is great, and these are our kids, and why wouldn't we support them? I think that when we're looking at some of the things to consider is, you know, moving forward, would it be better if Grantham didn't support it? Because then it could be part of Lebanon, which means that Lebanon students, Plainfield students and Grantham students would be doing destination imagination. Um, because I'm not sure if I would recommend funding it for everybody. And, and I know that that's hard to say, but there, there will be a fine line in starting or creating a precedent where you're funding certain things that, you know, that the area agreement should be funding or not, and who decides that and how far does that go? So I think that's worth consideration and, um, yeah, and, you know, the other option is is that you can fund it and you can say, yes, this is something that if Grantham students aren't given this opportunity, then we want them to be able to continue with this opportunity and be able to move forward with it. Um, Lebanon does not have DI, DI as far as Mrs. Beck is aware, and Plainfield does not, but they do have a robotics group, so. Um, and as Ellen said, maybe there would be interest if DI started at the middle or the high school. I know that, um, we tried to get a coach at the middle school a few years ago with some of our teams that were moving up and, and it, it wasn't going to be included as one of their activities.
Okay, so there's been some outreach to what, to what it is about supporting this?
Yes. At the middle school level, I don't think there, as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been anything at the high school level, but there have been requests at the middle school.
So when I was thinking about you, um, mentioning the funding, if this was funded here and just the Grantham students participating, would they be going as Lebanon students? Because that's where they're being schooled.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how that would work.
Yeah, but, and that's pretty tricky. Um.
I do know that they would probably physically have to come to it here, working on them, because if it's a student activity and we're funding it and Lebanon isn't, there would be, you know, kind of insurance and liability issues where they wouldn't be able to practice in lab schools.
Um, is this considered a club?
It is.
Okay.
It would be at the middle and high school level. Here we have, so, um, we budgeted this year in our enrichment for five DI teams, and we have enough for ten.
Oh, jeez.
Kids here at GBS are just dying to do it. So there's no shortage of interest on the GBS level. If, and I know that there are students who want to continue doing it through middle and high, middle anyway, again, high, we're not sure. I do understand what Ellen's saying about the time commitment. But, um, again, I think this is precedent setting. And that's what you really need to consider is, is you can set this precedent, but if you do that, I would advise that we come up with very specific parameters of what types of clubs or activities are funded and what types aren't.
Do, so we could have another situation where the T, if there were, if there were legacy teams that happened without sort of the initial coaching and fee funding and moved on and needed financial support, we could, again, support.
Absolutely.
Them in that situation.
At any time.
Okay.
Um, you know, anytime they make it to states or regionals or globals or something like that, you, you would support that. Support that. The question would be, do you want to support sort of foundational level, level club?
It just may also be something that can be used to get this program off and running within the areas. So I would say, if, you know, the interest is high from the Grantham kids and we did fund this, if there was increased interest among the other districts. I think that may, well, let's say force their hands, that may bring, bring the conversation a little more to the forefront of this Lebanon need to do something about this. I mean, I, I think around the rules of what clubs are going to fund. You know, like, outside of, I sort of view this as, these are clubs that we have at the elementary school. Um, if we did something like, you know, we, we would consider funding clubs that are continuations of the programs that we, we have here. May provide some security to us in the backend of getting, you know, funding the requests for this club and that club.
I mean, I think the reason it's so popular in Grantham is largely because of Mrs. Beck, then like her enthusiasm for it. And I feel like without that foundation in other districts, it's a little hard for me to imagine it being quite as, like, extraordinary as it is here. On just maybe to your point, Ed, not so much about like the particular proposal. I'm struggling a little bit because I feel like it's good for our student, I, I mean, I'm very close to a number of DI, they're not even alums yet, they're still, you know, some of the legacy kids in the high school. I think Ellen's point about especially the high school is really well put. I know that the kids that I know are not really sure if they can keep it going with all their other commitments. Um, the middle school maybe is a little more room for that, but, um, I also like the idea that they, I don't know, they, they take on some independence, but that meaning it's like really, they have to find ways to make it happen. I hope that doesn't sound like harsh. I just feel like it's part of like developmentally appropriate growing independence with it. Um, and that's sort of where the dialogue is that I hear from like the legacies here. And I think it is hard if they're in love, like in LMS, LHS. It sort of feels like we're like, I'm running some of the things that, you know, and I, I know that's not what it is, but it feels a little like that.
I think, I think, um, thinking about Ed's point and then yours, you know, Ed's point about how, you know, doing this and funding this could create interest and then it gets handed over to them. I think the same could be true, that if they have to find a way to make it happen, or parents have to find a way to fund it or make it happen, then that could also be a way to get them to start to adopt it, you know, and open it up to all area kids.
Is.
I think they could both happen.
Yeah. Do you know, is, is this likely to happen whether or not we fund?
I don't know.
Okay.
Is Mrs. Beck intending to work with these kids?
She is intending to work with one legacy team that she's kind of been following. Um, but as far as I know, and she's working with teams and she's coordinating them too. So she's incredibly, she's all DI.
Yeah.
Um, but I think there is one legacy team in the middle school that she's sticking with.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, yeah, I'm finding this difficult because I, I don't like the idea of funding something that seems to me is really the responsibility of, of Lebanon is an area of kind of responsibility. But the other hand, um, these kids want to continue this. Don't want to let them down either.
Mary, I honestly think the pros outweigh the cons on this. I mean, for fourteen hundred, you know, we're investing in graphic students to continue to do what they enjoy doing, and I think yeah, I, I would certainly be a favor of this.
What, what would be Lebanon's role, uh, if we did this? Wouldn't they have to approve taking on the club?
They would have no role.
No role.
No, no.
Kids do it here.
Yes. Town hall or, I know, um, if it's not, you know, under GBS, I know that some people run, you know, practices all over the place.
Yeah.
Um, what if, um, Lebanon students would like to be part of the group? Would they be able to with insurance and?
This is where I feel like I'm like, where did I, how did I become this person? But, um, I would recommend that if we're funding it, that it should be Grantham kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So therein lies a little bit of an issue, right, Denise, you can see.
Yeah, yeah.
They're in the school, Lebanon school sets some, and you can understand where the sending districts on some way that makes perfect sense, but on the other hand, not like this greatest optics.
I, I would feel like a helicopter parent. Funding a Grantham group in, in Lebanon. It just doesn't feel right. Um, but I see the desire of the kids to want to do this. I'm not sure what options we would have that would be the best.
It's tough to, I guess, I guess I wouldn't say this as explicitly before, but I also feel like they go to the middle school and the high school, and there are new, there are different opportunities. Nothing can replace DI, Mrs. Beck, I know, I firmly feel that, but on the other hand, it's not like they're, they have, they have opportunities, right? Maybe less, a little less at the middle school and certainly at the high school. Um, so I don't, that's what I mean about unrunning. I mean, everyone, if, if they choose to pursue DI after their time here and sort of have two minds about it, like, I know a lot of families, the families I know have like self-sourced a lot of the money when they need it.
Yeah, I was wondering if they would just fundraise to think.
I mean, it doesn't, you know, an equity and access issue, but it does happen, that they can self-source a lot of it.
I, I don't see this as a large request of money, but it, I think it's a complex.
Yeah, it's like.
It's not about the money.
Yeah.
We can very clearly afford it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's really not about the money. And you'll notice that a lot of times I've brought you with a recommendation and, you know, I think this could really go either way. I think it's a difficult decision.
Is it fourteen fifty for both teams?
Yes.
Do we have to decide this tonight?
Yeah. I guess I'm coming down on, unfortunately, it's problematic and I would pass on funding.
Go that way too.
Go that way too. I'm just worried about like larger implications for it. I can imagine other scenarios that.
Yeah. I, I was thinking if, if we had a similar program that wasn't being run as well as some would like in Lebanon, having a competing club in the same school and I don't know. I, I would say like if this was me and I have a better course here and I don't like the course at the middle school. Let's just fund this one. I mean, that's just an example of
Yeah.
Competing interest and.
I'm not really sure if competing, Lebanon doesn't have it. So it's not like I'm, you know, comparing courses or bands or it's, this is something that the women's ownership is not offering our GBS kids. And I'm not sure I see the competition here.
Well, maybe it's the, it's like what I was saying about the optic, meaning like if we fund this, we can't have them kids do it and therefore.
That's exclusionary.
Yeah, and, and Grantham already has a reputation of being somewhat elitist.
I think especially in the middle school, there's that perception.
Yeah.
I think the, the precedent idea that I think about is down the road if, you know, best slash worst case scenario, if the ten teams that are currently forming here, if all of them continue forward, depending on how many there are at different grade levels and things like that. You know, in five years, are we looking at continuing to, even if it's not a huge amount of money? What's the, what's the sort of expectation of the, the, the Gritham kids, you know, that are in the lower grades in terms of being able to, to do it continuing on upward in terms of that precedent? I, I guess for me, I like knowing that there is still sort of an option and an outlet for us to support this. So if they do, that's why I asked about if they do move forward in their competition. You know, if they go to a different level of competition where they need funding, even if it's not like the global level, if they go to a state competition or they go to you know, maybe that's an ask of, you know, that they're moving forward at the competition level that we can support them financially for a part of it. That seems like that's something that we've done in the past and also is admitting us to. It's not setting that precedent, but it is still supporting our our kids in the district.
That's such a different, you know, such a special request person, like running a program from.
Yeah.
I also think the cost goes up as they go to state level and oh, so it's not fourteen hundred dollars anymore.
That's right.
You know, three, five.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. So they need additional support.
And, and has Lebanon been asked about offering?
Yeah, at the middle school and they're not interested.
So do you, I mean, maybe these kids will hopefully learn, sorry, that's sometimes the way the world works. And it's not fair.
I was also thinking to myself from a Lebanon perspective, if I was like a teacher in the middle school and like Grantham kids were peeling off to like do a Grantham specific thing that we were supporting and not, that feels kind of picky to me. If I was hoping, let's say doing something, not DI, but something similar. And they were like, oh, well, we already do, Grant Murray supports us. Yeah, we're going back to, you know, we're going back to Grantham and doing our thing.
Yeah, it's, that's their school community now.
Right. Yeah.
We have a lot of active lobbyist type people in Grantham. They could start lobbying for next year.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if we don't support it.
And it's something we can bring up at a, at a, then I mean, I know it's not for a few months, but we can bring it up at our next area meeting. Just to, as, as a board, to, you know, sort of speak board to board.
Yeah.
About it. So do you need us to take action on that request?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we could frame it in a positive.
Yep. Um, so the motion would be to approve, the motion would be to approve the Destination Imagination Legacy Team request. Second, a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the Destination Imagination Legacy Team request, please say aye. And all those opposed to approving the Destination Imagination Legacy Team request, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so it is, the motion fails. And please extend, if they do have legacy teams this year, extend, you know, that, that in the past, the board has supported uh, competition costs and that kind of thing and
Will continue to.
Yeah, and would, would take requests. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so our next agenda item is the letter to the state board. Sydney reached out and asked if I would like her to draft a letter on behalf of the board to submit to, for written testimony to the state board. This is what she very kindly put together. If this is something we hadn't, we hadn't discussed this previously, but since the meeting is coming up in about a week. We can look through the letter, make any changes we'd like to it, or say, you know, that the board would not like to submit something. So anything's on the table here for this letter. You can have it submitted as is, we can edit it, or we can say, we don't want to submit any um, in person or written testimony.
Oh, this is the one about.
Yeah, this is for the, they're, and they're only taking written testimony for this. They're not taking any in-person.
No oral testimony this time.
Yeah.
I, I just want to thank you for drafting this letter.
Yes.
I hope it is in depth.
As we're having the conversation, I'll just say, since I did mention, since I said yes, when Sydney offered to write this letter, I am in favor of sending this in.
Yes, I am also.
One clarification and then one wording thing. On the second page, we asked and encouraged you to reject, propose, we keep the current rule in effect. So what's the current rule?
The current rule basically gives local districts the ability to decide to do a temporary, remote instruction.
Yeah. Okay, my brain is having a hard time switching from the.
This is why they're doing them all in the same day.
Yeah, and on the first page, this is just a wording thing, but in the second paragraph, uh, the second line where it says didn't have the opportunity to pride, provide input prior to this language. Okay, moving forward to you for review, I just found that a little awkward, I guess. This language.
Oh, what if I just stopped it prior to this language moving forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Just put a period there.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think.
Have we been asked? This is what.
Yeah, thank you for asking. This is what we.
So.
I know.
Your local control and not giving consideration to each school district's needs, which is the whole point of public education, serve your public.
It also just shows no appreciation for how difficult the staffing has been.
It is every day.
I hope it's going to be easier.
Me too.
Any other edits or changes or thoughts on this? Okay, so we would need a motion to authorize our superintendent to submit the letter on behalf of the board as amended. So I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. Okay, perfect. Our next agenda item is symptomatic testing protocol.
So we've had a pretty successful run with our asymptomatic protocol. We have about a third of staff and students who do it every other Wednesday. Knock on something, we've had a hundred percent negative results every time. Very, um, you know, Grantham's just an amazing community in terms of following protocols. We have a really high vaccination rate in the community. People are very conscientious of others. You know, we're very, very lucky that way and we like to keep it that way. But, um, now that that's up and running and we have a pretty smooth process for it, I would like to propose that we start doing symptomatic testing. So this is the protocol that you'd see for that. So anybody who is already, whose parents or guardians have already given consent to the surveillance testing that we're doing, if their children are at school and they come down with symptoms, instead of, you know, it's really hard to get a test right now. It's incredibly hard. That we would be able to have our school nurse Karen Islander who has amazingly, you know, volunteered to add this to her her daily tasks, but it helped her too in a way because she knows very quickly what's, what's going on with the student. So the student would be able to go down to see Mrs. Islander. She would call the parent just to say, this is what I'm seeing. How about if I give them the test? She could do the rapid test, have results in fifteen minutes. The student would still have to go home until the symptom is gone because we want the symptom itself out of the building. But then we could get them back more quickly, you know, and then we would know what was going on with them.
Yeah.
If a student is homesick, they would be able to actually call the main office and if Mrs. Islander has the tests available and the time, they parent, you know, again, since it's difficult to get a test, would be able to kind of come around in the car loop, meet Mrs. Islander, she'll dawn her COVID testing here and do the rapid antigen test and kind of, you know, be able to give a phone call and get those results quickly to the family. So, um, one of the things that you've probably heard about in the news is a shortage of antigen tests. We have enough here already to get this started. There is a chance that every place is going to run out. And that's probably what you're hearing on the news and in the state updates, but they, the state is supposed to get another seven hundred and fifty boxes, I think, early next week. We have plenty to be able to get this rolling and I, I wouldn't recommend that we don't move forward with this just because we might run out of tests. You know, I think it's a better idea to just go ahead and do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And staff are eligible as well. So it might help with our staffing.
Yes.
So because I'm not a nurse, my customer would be the, the symptoms that COVID can present are varied.
Everything.
And, and they can be so common to regular childhood.
Yep.
illnesses.
Or no symptoms at all.
What would warrant the COVID test?
Any of the symptoms.
Yeah.
Yeah, any of that.
Any, any of the list, any one.
It helps and that it would rule it out.
And which is one of the reasons why it's so difficult right now is not only that hard to get a test, but once you get a test, depending on where you go, it can take days to get the result. So that affects students' education and then that affects our staff and so we can just get it rolling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what the accuracy, I just have a question.
So if somebody's symptomatic, they're very accurate, the sensitivity is very high. They're not as accurate if somebody's completely asymptomatic. But with symptomatic testing, they're good. I believe they said ninety-six percent because we were discussing the other progress.
Yeah, I thought I saw it somewhere.
Yeah. Which is pretty accurate.
I think that's quite a resource that we've got available.
Yeah, I mean, if we can do it, why not?
It's going to keep more kids in school and staff in school.
And people less worried.
Right. That's what the surveillance testing is done, is that it gives people a lot of peace of mind. And there will be a time where we do the surveillance testing and we get back some positive results, but it means that we have caught it early and we've done what we need to do so that the problem doesn't get worse.
And this will hopefully move the needle on the surveillance testing because you can only be eligible if you are in the surveillance testing.
Exactly.
And so it's only a third of the students right now who technically be eligible.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have a lot of increased participation.
And how are these tests funded, Sydney?
They're all state funded, so we don't pay for the staff for the tests or anything.
That's good.
What, what's the procedure of we get a positive for a rapid?
During, for symptomatic or during the surveillance testing? Cause it's different.
Systematic.
Symptomatic. So if somebody comes in and they have the rapid test and if it comes back positive, they immediately have to follow the isolation and quarantine guidelines for a positive COVID. And then we have to report that to DHHS. So those would follow kind of that chart that we sent home for everybody for their fridge of, you know, what, what you do next.
So.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I included it in here as well. I feel like I.
So. So I have a question about.
Can I add, did that answer your question?
Well, I'm just wondering, yeah, yes, I'm not.
Okay.
If they go get a PCR and it comes back negative, are they allowed back in or are we, is it still the ten days out?
So if they have a positive rapid antigen and then they go and do a follow-up PCR, the PCR, I believe, is the more accurate one.
So that would be the overriding.
That would be the overriding. I can check with Mrs. Islander and DHHS or not, but my understanding is that the PCR is going to be more accurate.
So if that were negative, the child.
I also have to say the chances of having a positive rapid antigen are pretty small if you're symptomatic.
Yeah.
You know, that's pretty, pretty slim.
Yeah, and how easy is it for students who are not yet granted permission for the testing to just permission from the.
Yeah, I think it takes about two minutes to sign up.
And I'm nice for parents to know that that's an available option, you know, we haven't chosen yet.
Okay, so.
And I, before we.
It's okay. Go ahead. You're probably just saying what I'm gonna.
I just wanted to say that, you know, the the staffing issue with the lab that we're working with, they're dealing with the staffing issues that everybody's seeing everywhere and especially in medical profession right now. And I do want to say that, you know, we've talked to Mrs. Islander a lot about this and she's on board with it and this really is additional work that she's doing if they can't send a second staff member, if they can't send a staff member doing the testing. But, you know, we talked a lot about it with her and she's willing to do it because it also gives her a lot more control over navigating things with home and with the physician's offices and the notes and who's coming and going and who's isolating and quarantining and all of those kind of things. So ultimately, what I want to say is a really big thank you because with this symptomatic protocol, it wouldn't be on the table in front of you if it hadn't been for her agreement and willingness to do it.
Superstar. Yeah. So just for like super clarity.
Yes.
If, if there are symptoms, the child is going to be home.
Yeah.
No matter what the result is.
So you still, you want the symptom out of the building. So see, there's, somebody comes in and they present with a cold. Right? They still have to go home because we don't want twenty other people to get that cold who now need to be tested.
Yeah.
So, but if they have the negative rapid antigen test, they're going to go home and we know that that's negative. So we know that at that point it's a cold and they can come back once the symptoms are improving, which is going to be a lot faster than. Scheduling a test and getting into a doctor's office and all of those things. So we still want the symptom out of the building, but staff and students are going to come back faster.
So I think one of the things that we have to be really like, put it multiple places, multiple times is that if there are symptoms, the, the, this test isn't a come to school that same day.
You mean if you're sick?
If you, the symptomatic.
Okay.
Yeah, so if they're, because there's no.
Come and get tested. Yeah.
Right, right, right. But it's, it's not, so like if someone comes and gets tested, if they are at home, they have a, they have a runny nose, they come and get tested, the test is negative, they're still going home.
Yeah.
So we have to be very clear that this isn't a, come and get the test, wait five minutes and your kid gets to come into school. Cause I think there's going to be an assumption that this is a like fast pass back to school.
It's not.
Yeah. Yeah, it's faster. Yes, yeah, and more convenient and all of those things, but it's not a I, cause I think some of the, the, the idea out there is that the schools that are offering symptomatic testing are letting kids
Stay.
Stay. Yeah, so you go, you get the, you get the test and then you can just go back to class. Or you come in in the morning, get the test and you can come in.
Right, and there are a lot of schools, they do it, they call it, and actually where I live, it's called the Test to Stay Program. We did talk about that. The problem is that then you are passing the symptom around.
Right.
And then you need to test twenty or thirty more people probably.
Yeah.
And you never know if it's the same cold. You know, you always have to err on the side of caution.
So it'll be a negative test and a resolution of symptoms.
Yeah. Improving.
Right, not resolution, improving symptoms, improving.
We all know you can sniff and cough for weeks. Yeah, yeah, but improving symptoms and, and the same applies for a fever as always, no fever at all, ever.
Unmedicated.
Yeah, unmedicated.
What is a super child with allergies?
Well, see, Mrs. Islander will. Well, see, Mrs. Islander will know that the child has allergies and is diagnosed and that's all taken into consideration.
Yep, and sometimes if you forget to give your child their Claritin in the morning, you panic. As they're getting out of the car. Just saying her friend.
No, I didn't, I did just um get a message from Mrs. Islander for one of the questions and she said that. The first student that we had positive was a positive antigen test and then a negative PCR. But DHHS said to go with the antigen test and count the student as positive.
So you count a positive.
Yeah, a positive is a positive.
Wow, yeah.
And I guess, um, I remember when we discussed that at the time, because I remember we talked about it with the pregnancy test. Like if you did one positive and one negative, you still assume.
You're still pregnant.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was like, okay, great.
Well, that analogy stuck in all of our heads, I think, right?
I do remember that. I do remember that. Yeah. Yeah, um, okay, and for the, the other thing that I think we should be really clear. And that I was glad was in here and that we should be really clear about is that for students who are, become symptomatic during the day. That it'll be done at the parent's request or with the parent's permission.
Yeah, they're already consented, but Mrs. Islander said she'd always still.
Yeah, yeah.
They're gonna, they're gonna get the test.
Yeah.
Because a parent might say, I'd rather just take them to get a PCR and that's.
Exactly.
Perfectly acceptable option.
Yeah. Yeah, any other questions for this? We need, we do, we need a motion to approve the symptomatic testing protocol, some respective. I saw a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and any opposed, say nay. Excellent, okay, next up is the MTSS presentation.
Okay, and I have to use Sydney's computer because mine is in the cafeteria. What?
Yours is at lunch.
Mine's at lunch. Um, it's, I shared it on your. So I'm gonna work really hard to be coherent, but it's way past.
We should have put you at the beginning.
Yeah.
If you could give us the bullet points if you're not wanting to elaborate. It's a lot of hard work, so.
It is.
So this year, we introduced MTSS, which is the multi-tiered system of supports at Granton Village School. We had a team of teachers working over the summer to plan it out and um. And figure out how we wanted to roll it out and how we wanted to work, and then in September, we took off with it. So I'm gonna share a little bit about what that is. This slide has a lot of words and I'm actually gonna share the presentation with you so you can read it at another time. But in general, what is MTSS? It's Multi-Tierred System of Supports. It's a um, an approach to, to education where we have collaboration among. Um, special educators, interventionists, and classroom and grade level teachers. To work together using a data-driven um approach. To come up with the best learning opportunities for all children and from where they are now to where they can go. So the, the picture, the pyramid is probably something you've seen before previously with RTI. Um, so our GDS MTSS um model is this year we pulled in K through two. So we're really focusing on K through two right now, next year we're gonna try to pull in three and four. So that bottom red tier is the biggest base and that's the core classroom instruction. And the goal of MTSS is every child is getting quality core um classroom instruction. So sometimes in schools, kids are pulled out of that core classroom instruction so they can get their intervention or get their um special education services. But in MTSS, we want all kids to get that core um instruction. The next tier up is tier two, which is targeted small group. At Granton Village School, the way that we um have been able to schedule MTSS. All kids are actually getting that targeted small group instruction, which is pretty cool. Um, so I'm gonna explain it a little bit later or maybe I'll explain it now and skip it later. But um, the, the MTSS teams are getting together every week in looking at. Um, data that they, they've gotten from um Progress Monitor and deciding what. Um, what to focus on with each, with each child and what grouping to move them to and what's gonna best service, service them. And because of the way we're scheduling, all children are getting those services. So even if, you know, it's a child who is above grade level and reading. We're giving them enrichment to kind of move them on forward. And then that tier three is intensive individual intervention and those are for our identified students. And our goal is that those students are getting tier one, tier two, and tier, tier three, so they're getting lots of support and um instruction. So like I said, um, it's a real teamwork approach, so it's the classroom teachers, the special education teachers, both interventionists. Um, any specialist, so OT, speech, behavior specialist, um, myself, Mrs. Whitman. Um, all coming together to look at the data, to talk about the kids' needs and to create the best plan for every child.
Now, is this, is this just for focused on academic progress?
Right now, we're working, we're focused on literacy and social emotional learning.
Okay.
Um, we had to kind of take it in smaller chunks. So I think I covered that. So at the beginning of the school year, again, this year, we started with K through two with early intervention. And we started in September by the, we called the data team. Um, actually, I think they called themselves the academic data team and they said they were the A-team. Mrs. Buckley, Mrs. Hutchins, Mrs. O'Reilly, and Mrs. Giadasis. Kind of swooped into those grade levels and did star early literacy and star math testing with the kiddos. Um, it was a screening, they did it in September, they're gonna do it two more times during the school year. And through that, kids kind, through their um, the results of their testing, they get put on paths, so to speak. So the green path is, you know, academically, they're solid, they don't need any intervention. So the team got together to determine what extension activities can we do, how can we bring them to that next level. Um, the blue arrow depicts those kiddos that, you know what, they don't need intervention. But let's keep an eye on them, um, because they're not quite green right now. Yellow was kids who showed that they needed intervention and red was intensive intervention. That team then took the red and the yellow group and did a star CDM, which I don't know what CDM stands for, to be honest with you. Um, but it kind of delves deeper into things to get more information on what are the intricate needs of those students. And then all of the students as well. Had a running record with foundness and panel, which we've always historically done. Um, foundations fluency assessments and then site word assessments to really kind of dissect what their needs are. Uh, besides those three times a year screening, every six weeks that the team with the classroom teachers are doing progress monitoring. They're use, using the star data system. Um, and they're using that data and their data from their day-to-day interaction with the kids. To, to make changes to groupings and academics and, and what they teach, so it's pretty exciting.
Measures, I knew it was curriculum based.
So awesome. Um, so right now at Granton Village School, our schedule every morning from nine to ten thirty is academic intervention time. Which is our MTSS time. And literally that whole team, the specialist, the special educator, the interventionist, the classroom teachers, they all kind of swoop in. And there's groups happening everywhere, it's so cool to walk in and see because they, um, the routines are so set. And the kids know what they need to do and where they need to go and just so much neat learning going on, I had some pictures to show you afterwards. So that's happening every day and then one afternoon a week, all the adults are getting together that are part of that team. And looking at data and doing planning, um, and really directing instruction. So in the classrooms, I had the opportunity, this is, all these pictures are from like fifteen minute snapshots of two classes. Or two grade levels, and so you'll see there's a lot going on. Um, there are a few kids in here that don't have photo permissions, but I reached out to the parents and they said for this, it was okay, so.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome, I'm, these are exciting pictures, there's no music, so someone can sing if you want.
Do the kids seem to enjoy this work thing?
They do, and I'm gonna share some quotes when, this is only like a minute.
Um, what a cool way with some of those bigger classes too, like there's no, there wasn't one of those pictures that had more than six kids in it.
Right, it, it's really exciting.
Yeah.
And so I asked the teachers. I'm trying to get the next slide. You, at the very beginning, there was a lot of apprehension, a lot of fear because it's something new, um, and it does take a lot of planning. Um, so I asked them, what do you think of it today? And this was last week. And some of the quotes, which are just so exciting, are, there's a great feeling in the classroom during MTSS time, groups are having fun and kids hear. Hear that and feel like learning is fun. I love that when you look into any of the primary classrooms, you cannot tell which student in the class has an IEP from a student without one. Our small group learning time is no longer interrupted by having to transition to another space within the school in order to receive learning supports. And I'm not sure I really touched upon that earlier, but kids aren't, we're not pulling them out to go to whatever room, they're all staying in one spot. Following the MTSS model allows students to remain in their classrooms with peers as they participate in small groups. They are not missing any core instruction to receive an intervention, which is so positive. It's amazing having so many hands on deck to help meet kids where they are and help them move forward. Students are loving the extra attention they're receiving in small groups, the collaboration among the team has been extremely helpful. And then all of these are powerful, but I thought this last one was super powerful. When we first started planning for this year's MTSS model, I couldn't picture it and I wasn't sure how it would work. However, this has become a wonderful part of our day. We are seeing growth and progress, which is backed up by data that we have more time to collect and look through as a team than I ever could by myself. All students are getting individualized instruction, including below grade level, at grade level, and enrichment groups. I do not have students who have been pulled out, returning to class in the middle of a whole group lesson, not sure what we are doing. And possibly, most importantly, I am noticing students feeling like they are reading rock stars. And using very positive language to describe themselves as readers because of individualized small group instruction, which they see everyone getting. I'm feeling very optimistic and positive about this model for chemistry. So, that's my good thing, just quick summary of, of MTSS.
That was awesome, yeah.
And I will send you the slideshow so you can read through it.
That'd be great, yeah, it's been so much work and thank you and to everybody.
And like I said, there really was, as any change always brings apprehension, right? It's scary, especially after we've gone through a year and a half of COVID and everything's changed.
Yeah.
But it's been such a positive, positive story.
I'm happy for you because that's probably a stress relief for you to see the.
The positive.
I mean, it's an absolute dream not to focus out and have them feel like this is really, truly inclusive, differentiated instruction approaches. Totally dreamy, so huge kudos, amazing.
Is everyone doing this at the same time? So K through two has that academic intervention block because of staffing.
Yeah.
Um, the, the team kind of swoops into, I don't remember the order. But I think they start with second grade and then they go swoop into kindergarten and they swoop into first grade. Um, and as the year progresses and we get to know students more, more. There's a chance that kids might cross over from grade level depending on their needs.
So next year, you're looking at three and four.
We're gonna add three and four, not at the um, time-wise, it would be impossible to add the same amount of time. But really, we, we wanna have that large chunk for K two because early intervention is our goal. And then hopefully it won't be such a big chunk as we knew.
Yeah.
So kind of taking that win time that we've always had and that they, that the kids have now.
Yeah.
And doing it more of a collaborative.
So I'm happy for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so our next um agenda item is just a quick report out for the delegate assembly, just to let you know what went down there, it was good. Um, there's, so there's a hundred and sixty-one districts in the state, there were fifty that were in attendance. So that was the, and that's pretty normal, so. Um, so the business part of things was very normal as always goes. Um, when we got to the, the resolution, so the continuing resolutions from last year that had to be re-adapted. There was uh, two that were successfully pulled out to look at individually, the rest of them were just adopted. To move forward for another year, they have to be continuing resolutions for a, a certain number of years before they move into the, whatever this is called. The um, Policies, Resolutions and Statement of Belief Manual. So the ones that were pulled out and changed were um, number six. Which is about the um IDEA allocation. And th- this one I wanted to mention specifically, so that what the language of it says is the Nottingham and Stafford School Boards oppose changes. In the IDEA allocation calculations resulting in funds being dispersed directly to the school or district. In which the child is registered in towns which do not have high schools and not to the student's residence. The Nottingham and Stafford School Boards calls for the immediate return of prior method of calculation for IDEA, federal and state funds, as well as maintaining this commitment. In the future to keep any and all funds distributed to the student's town of residence. That was discussed because some of the, the districts that don't send students out didn't really understand the implication. It was kept exactly as is moving forward, so that'll stay on for another year. Um, and then the biggest discussion of the entire meeting was about the next one. Which is the school administrative units should be held harmless during the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year for differentiated aid. Differentiated aid for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And to twenty twenty-two should be based upon free and reduced meal numbers for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. The New Hampshire School Boards Association will make this a priority in its lobbying efforts during the upcoming New Hampshire legislative session. So that was adopted before the legislation had come through that effectively did that. And the legislation says that it will use a prior year or the current year, whichever is more favorable. To the district, so depending on what your free and reduced lunch numbers look like, a previous year may be more beneficial to you than your current. Um, and so what, there was a big, long discussion about should this be a resolution, all of that kind of stuff. What they ended up, what we ended up approving was it was amended to widen the scope of what the language was. And remove any of the dates. So the scope of the advocacy will be to advocate for um, like equity in free and reduced lunch calculations. And for that, the, the benefit to always be given to the district in terms of how that's calculated. Um, and so removing the dates from it, if this is, you know, is an ongoing thing. Where that fluctuates from year to year. And so removing the dates from it, if this is, you know, is an ongoing thing where that fluctuates from year to year. Depending and the big push and Manchester School District spoke out a lot about it because they have adopted the. I can't, it's like the summer schools or something like that. It's what's it called that we didn't take part in, which is free lunch. Yeah. See the, so it's free lunch for everyone. So they've seen a huge drop in their application numbers because everyone's getting free lunch now. So families don't have to apply. So.
But then they requested the applications for the calculations.
Right. Yeah. So. Quick summary, it stayed in, but it was just amended to make the language more broad and to take the dates out. And then the ones that we had looked at, the. Eight was the one about a scholarship fund for student representatives to school boards. It did exactly what we had hoped would happen, which was the resolution, it failed as a resolution, but they pulled the room. And that almost unanimously, I think there's like two people that said no. The the representative, the delegates were in favor of the School Board Association establishing a scholarship fund for student school board representatives. So they'll be moving forward with that in the future. The number nine, which was about like the paying dues and segregating the dues until like this R S A. No one even, the person who brought it forward made a motion. There wasn't a second, so it didn't even, wasn't even considered. The one from Keen about diversity, equity and inclusion in all aspects of our schools. In response to the divisive concepts bill was approved. Eleven, so that one will move forward. Eleven was about the transit, post graduation transition program. And that one, there was a motion from the district that brought it forward. There was. No, no, there wasn't even a motion from them. There was no motion made whatsoever about that one. So no action was taken. I don't think they were there. I think that was. Then the one from Hanover Dresden, which was the other one about equity and inclusion, the one that we thought had. Really good language, but was a little too specific because it called out a bill specifically. That one had a good conversation. But it did fail for in the. When the delegate, the delegates voted on it, it failed. So that one is not moving forward, but the other one is. And then there was a late resolution that someone brought forward. The vote allowed it to bring up. Very interesting. It was to amend R S A ninety one A to allow for remote participation in meetings and committees. So that board members could have remote. Board members could remote into a meeting and still. Still vote, still participate.
Sorry, you can already do that, right?
So the, what we were told was no. Yeah. So there seems to be some confusion about that.
Within the N H S B A.
Yes. My hunch is. That. There are boards that have successfully done it, but it's not something they are recommending be done like. They're not saying that everyone can do that statewide because. It could become a right to know. Thing. So their recommendation at this was that it not happen. They, there are bills moving forward to do this already. So Senator Khan is sponsoring a bill to do this already. And the. Body, the delegate body voted yes to add this to the the things that the School Board Association will advocate for. Is remote participation of board members. There is some debate about if it will be for, if the focus of it will be for. Meetings like like this one, or if it will be for committee work. Because a lot of the boards that are big boards, big districts, their committees, what they're really aiming for is for their committees to be able to meet virtually. So that board members aren't meeting in person multiple nights, you know, in a month. So. And that's what happened. It was good. It was interesting.
Did, I can't remember the timing. Did the delegate assembly happen before or after New Hampshire pulled out of the?
So, so the, it happened after they had sent the.
First email.
They had sent the howler. And. I think they may have sent it so that it didn't come up during the delegate assembly. Because that seems to sort of placate some people who were, there were rumbly's about it.
Oh, they sent the howler before the delegate assembly, but.
They didn't withdraw.
Yeah.
Until after it. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So there wasn't discussion about it at the delegate assembly.
No. Yeah. So that's that.
It was quite a saga.
Yeah. Yes.
I haven't gone to the letter yet.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Any questions from that? All right. So our next agenda item is our policies and this is. Nothing new. We are looking at the same ones that we did last month. So we're looking at the rescind of three and the second reading and adoption. So a whole host.
I made the recommended changes from your first reading in all of these. And just to answer Christine, you had a question about. If one level of a five day in school suspension, basically. There's a different term of change of. Assignment, I think they call it, but it's five day in school suspension essentially, if that's appealable. And I did follow up on that. It is not appealable. So the recommendation and the way that the law reads is that the only suspensions or expulsions, ten days or more should ever be appealable.
Thank you. Okay, so. Any, let's take the second reading and adoption list first. So all those. The second reading, I'll say them later. Any discussion of the policies for second reading and adoption? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of policies J I C, J I C D. J I C D dash R E B B E B C A, E B C B, J F A B D and J F A B E. Okay, so I have a motion from Ed and a second from Leslie. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay. And then the rescind is any discussion of the policies to rescind. Same ones as last month. Okay, so we need a motion to rescind policies E C A B, E B B C R one and E B B C R two. All right. So I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. And any opposed, say nay. All right. Excellent. We have a principal's report from Kristen and she shared, you shared the photos with the whole board, correct?
Yeah, I did.
So she shared some photos from the parade and from the Blue Ribbon Day at school with the board, if you haven't had a chance to check those out.
What a nice day that was.
Um, we won't make you do tons more talking. Is there anything else you wanted to add from your report?
So did you see how amazing our entryway looks?
I came in so fast. No.
Oh, it looks so good. I need to go in. Toby and Will.
I can't believe it's already up.
My thing works so hard today. And I think Brenda gave them the directions on where to put things. So it looks amazing and so exciting. So thank you to that crew and Brenda for making that happen. Like I, like Brittany said, I shared the pictures and two absolutely amazing days we had. You know, the parade was fabulous and it was fun to share with the community, but I'll tell you yesterday with all the kids was amazing.
For the picture, they were so adorable. They were just like, this is so good. This is so awesome.
There's a lot of pride.
And that's really all I have to say.
Just another ordinary month.
Now you have to get your rest so you can get ready for your trip.
I know, I just think I haven't finished packing.
Remember your glasses.
I know.
She told me the last time she went someplace, she forgot her glasses and her contacts.
Oh, my gosh.
So I do daily wear, so I just kind of put them in solution. Online without them, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your work on this.
You're welcome.
All this stuff, it does seem like these months go quick. So. All right. And our next item is the superintendent report.
So most of mine, we've already gone over at tonight's meeting. I do want to say that we do have interest in our bid that will be coming to the next board meeting for the. Renovation and place space project. Which is great because I know we were worried, we only got one bid last time. So we've had four site visits so far and people are coming for a site visit. That's a great sign. Our fundraisers are going well, which I discussed and. I attached the progress monitoring committee minutes because I know that you like to see those and there's another meeting tomorrow night. And other than that. There's been a lot just going on with me attending state meetings and statewide things and the law update. There's a lot to keep up with these days. And Brittany and I were able to also attend the area meeting, one of our three required meetings per year. It was a nice meeting. And there was a request by Plainfield to set up a meeting in the spring of. Just a smaller group, not the full area board to just talk about more ways that the area districts can work on cost savings and efficiency and student benefits. So I think that's a great idea. I know that Mrs. Reed added to her report, the letter from Ruth Ward, who came to visit. We also received over the last couple of days, really nice letters from Senator Shaqeen and Senator Hassan. So I'll be able to forward those to you as well and we'll, we'll put those up on your bulletin board unless they're already there.
I think I printed one to get laminated and I, I don't think I got the second one.
Okay.
I was going to frame them.
It's like one of those like gallery walls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any given, I mean, I'm like floating slightly off my seat, given the good news about Pfizer vaccines today.
Four fifteen, they decided, right?
Yeah. Do we have any, have we heard it all about? Yeah, like, like, so what's the plan of approach?
Okay, so the plan of approach will be that there will be pharmacies that are designated as available. In addition, pediatricians offices, and we do know of one regional clinic. It won't be onsite here, but we do know that there's going to be an Upper Valley Regional Clinic. I believe it's the second weekend in November, pretty soon in November thirteenth, where we would be able to start vaccinating five through eleven. Originally, we talked about, you know, clinic right here at G B S, but it seems like the regional public health network is going to be doing it in left.
Yeah.
It'll be easy to access for everybody.
Do you have any sense of parents who are reluctant?
So we have, I haven't talked to a lot of parents about how they're feeling about it. I know that if you look at the national surveys, it's pretty much split a third, a third, a third. A third are going to do it right away. A third are just going to do it, do it, but they're going to wait and see. And a third are no way, I'm not doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You might extrapolate though in this town with our high rate of vaccination.
Yeah.
That's probably a higher inclination.
Yeah, that's good. Kristen and I will be out for progress monitoring committee tomorrow night, but I wanted to ask you, while I know you'll be talking about vaccinations. I'm wondering if some of our members there might be willing to do a panel Q and A on Zoom or something. You know, some of our medical professionals might be able to just do a Q and A and it's more local and they can, you know, more of a comfort factor.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
But we also, you know, we already require quite a few vaccinations for school attendance. Yeah. I think it will, I think it's exciting news coming forward that it's approved and.
Feeling happy for kids to be safer.
Yes. Yeah, because I mean, a lot of people focus on the kids will go back to normal or masking or those kind of things. But the real focus is we have a lot of kids who are still anxious. Kids who are nervous or worried about giving it to a family member. You know, just that that social emotional benefit is going to be big.
Yep. Yep. And we're getting boosted.
Yes.
Anything else for Sydney?
Celebration.
Have some nice dinner. Things have been busy, so it's probably good we haven't thought about it too much.
Okay, our next agenda item is the consent agenda. Any comments or anything to pull or look at from there? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Wesley and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay. And we have a non-meeting tonight, so we can adjourn and then non-meet, right? Yep. We don't have to come back. Okay. All right. So.
Have to go into non-public.
Yep. So no non-public session tonight. So our next meeting is December seventh. And. Crazy. Curious me that I said those words out loud. And other than that, thanks to everyone who joined us for via Zoom or watches this later on. We appreciate it. And you can plan to see us again on December seventh. So, yes.
I just want to remind you, since you're talking about the next meeting, that next meeting, you'll need to give some thought to whether or not you want to have the January meeting in Eastman. If they're allowing meetings there at that time, because we usually do our January budget meeting there. Just food for thought.
Perfect. Thank you.
They're, they're doing those Wednesday night presentations, I think, in person.
So you could, it's hybrid. But I suspect that will be okay unless, you know, the numbers change. All right. So we just need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Ed and I need a second.
Second.
Second from Leslie. So that all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. All right.